Good evening. It's Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. It's 4:40. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to call the roll?
Mr. Moore.
I am here.
Mr. Riddell.
Here.
Mr. Hung.
Here.
We have a quorum. Today is the public hearing. A petition was received on August 11, '22 from Bob Schmidt Homes and additional property owners for the Fortune Ditch, Ditch and Dixon Ditch, Eaton Township and City of North Ridgeville in accordance with the over rise code 6131.07. Construction improvement is necessary will be conducive to public welfare. The following is the course and termini of said proposed improvement to wit. Fortune Ditch, Eaton Township, original lot 50, 31, 30, 11 and 10, commencing from confluence with Fortune Ditch main channel located 1,000 feet southwest of the intersection, a state route 83 and Butter Nut Ridge Road, then easterly 2.75 miles along Fortune Ditch to termini. At point, the ditch crosses under Sprague Road, 500 feet east of Root Road. Lateral of Fortune Ditch, Dixon Ditch, Eaton Township and North Ridgeville, original lot 11, one commencing from confluence with Fortune Ditch, 1,000 feet southwest of intersection of Root and Sprague Road, then north easterly 1,500 feet along Dixon Ditch to termini and point the ditch crosses under Root Road, about 1,000 feet northwest of the intersection of Root and Sprague Road. The following is the nature of the work petitioned for. Clean and restructure drainage system by excavating and shaping the ditches, removing obstructions such as sediment, trees, vegetation, and replace two undersides' culverts in order to restore adequate drainage and provide access within a new permanent easement for county maintenance. November 15th, '22, the first hearing was held and by Resolution 22795 ordered to proceed with the project survey and design for the proposed improvement and have engineer submit final report. February 24th, '23, Resolution 23184 accepted the report from the county engineer and scheduled the final hearing today. March 20th, '23, 116 certified letters were sent to the property owners and notification was published in the Chronicle on March 24th and April 4th.
I think Mr. Moore.
Oh.
You're up.
Okay, I was looking.
I know.
So you have to follow along.
That's kind of just in for you guys.
No, that's fine. Okay, we have with us the prosecutor's office, Assistant Prosecutor Greg Pelts. Go ahead or let you, you want to stand and anybody wishing to give any testimony or speak today, please stand and raise your right hand.
Anyone wishing to give testimony, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give is the whole truth?
Affirm.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the petitioner, do they have any comments?
I don't see you.
Um?
I don't see anybody.
Is there any township trustees here? That have any wish to put any comments? How about the city? Anybody like wish to comment from the city of North Ridgeville?
No, not a resident. City officials.
City council, that's why I mean from the city council member, that's why.
Council member.
And, okay. As engineer's office, would you like to?
Yes, please.
Have any comments, I guess so. We could have had, well, I didn't know we had the microphone there, you could have.
Good afternoon, commissioners, members of the audience. My name is Peter Zwick. I'm representing the office of the county engineer this afternoon at this final hearing in the ditch petition process. When the board met last November, you heard me say that this Fortune and Dixon Ditch project is a really good one, not because it was my idea or I suggested it back some time ago, but for some other reasons. And at this time, when the board of commissioners is reviewing its final decision, I wish to make these brief comments. Number one, funds are now available to pay for engineering and construction to restore the drainage of about three miles of important water courses. This will benefit hundreds of homes and farms, which are located on more than 700 acres of land in Eaton Township and in the city of North Ridgeville. Also, this improvement is necessary to provide an adequate outlet for floodwaters that now jeopardize the public safety and welfare. That water damages property and also reduces agricultural productivity. The proposed improvements, however, will restore the ability of Fortune and Dixon Ditches to drain the watershed and make it free of obstructions and free of sediment. They will also allow public road culverts to function as originally intended. This project will be constructed utilizing, utilizing environmentally sensitive practices and it will permanently filter runoff and it will control erosion. Very importantly, the ditch petition statute provides the legal mechanism to permanently maintain all these new drainage improvements going forward in time. And for the record, the engineers will state, the county engineer's office will state once again that we expect that the benefits of this project will outweigh its costs. Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions for me at this time, then I will introduce the stormwater district consultant, K.E. McCartney Engineering. They will answer any questions that you may have regarding the final engineering report that they've prepared. And of course, the county engineer's office does concur with the finding and recommendations of that report. Mark?
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Ruffener with K.E. McCartney and Associates. I'm going to see if I can get this to work here. All right. Looks like it's working. So this is the final public hearing for the ditch petition for Fortune and Dixon Ditch, as has been mentioned. And I'm just going to briefly go over some of the stuff we've talked about previously at the last, the viewing and at the first hearing and then kind of provide some concluding remarks. So first, let's take a look at why we're doing this project. This ditch is chalked with vegetation, with sediment, as Peter mentioned. You can see in these photos that vegetation, you can see the water backed up in the culvert that Sprague Road. The next photos show some of the log jams that are representative of, of log jams along the ditch. And these are continually occurring. The county actually has cleaned out some, but there are additional ones that have fallen in since that cleaning took place. We did submit a final report through the county engineer. That report was submitted in February. It is dated January 26, 2023. Within that report, we estimated the total cost to be 1.836 million. Again, as Peter mentioned, it is our opinion that benefits will exceed the costs and that the proposed improvements will answer the prayer of the petition. We also note within the report a detailed breakdown of the estimate of the costs and that includes $0 of estimated damages. So this is the area we are talking about, the, the area that will benefit from the improved drainage. North is up on this map. State Route 83 is on the west side and the Lorraine County, Cuyahoga County line is on the east side. The 724 acre area outlined in red will be served by the ditch and the improvement is shown in blue. The flow of water goes toward the left, which is to the west. So the plan is to clean and restore between two and a half and three miles of ditch. It will restore local drainage for 724 acres of farms, rural residences and suburban residents. We will be clearing trees along the route and there will be one culvert constructed or actually reconstructed in the ditch. And then there will be a permanent county maintenance and a 50-foot wide easement along the ditch. So today, as we have this final hearing, the commissioners have the opportunity to decide whether to proceed or not. If they decide to proceed, that would include approving the final assessments and then that would also include setting a time and date for receiving bids. If that decision would be to move forward, we can provide the, the date that we think would be, would work out well for bids for this project. And then if it moves forward at that point, then the county engineer bids the project. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me right now? Sure.
Mark, what was the process when you did your engineering and your assessment of the situation? You submitted that to the county engineer?
Yeah, so it's first it started with a site, some site visits after problems were identified. And we developed a preliminary engineering report in conjunction with the county engineer's office. That report was submitted to the commissioners and was reviewed at the first hearing. And then we did final design, final reports, assessments, and that was all submitted with this final report to prepare for the final hearing here today.
Peter, was there a distribution on this report? Is there, what do you do when you get the report other than give it to the commissioners? Does it, does it, does it get distributed to the property owners affected?
No, it does not.
There is a letter sent out for the final hearing that states what the assessment is and the project, I believe. Does that include anything about the, the final report?
No.
No, okay.
So Commissioner, we did not consider that it should not be distributed. It just, our office need not distribute it. We filed it with your commissioner.
I'm just trying to assess the project. This is, this is my baptism on ditch hearings. I figured that's why your hair is already whiter than mine. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Okay, stormwater management? Don, would you like to get up?
Good evening, board. Thank you. The biggest thing I want to be able to say is after working with a variety of people, meeting with several landowners who have been dealing with a, put it nicely, an unruly ditch that often leaves its banks and has created monetary damages caused by flooding to structures, to fields, to businesses that has impacted, one, a golf course from being able to open, often reduce crops. To come to you today with a final plan and with the confidence that you had in the stormwater district some months ago to provide funding that will ensure that this project, if it moves forward, will not have any assessments for construction levied against the residents and businesses that are within this watershed. Fortunately, with the ARPA funds, the, this board was able to, to direct some of those towards this project, which is an eligible use of ARPA funds to protect the public welfare, health and safety and to also protect our public infrastructure. We have a lot of investment in culverts and roadways along this and by having this ditch begin to work the way it was originally designed and those culverts to work as originally designed is actually going to prolong the life of that infrastructure, reduce the incidence and severity of flooding and improve the economic opportunities for the residents and the businesses that are within this watershed. And so with that, I want to thank you for this opportunity to pursue this project and also the people of North Ridgeville and their government, who have also pledged to cover the costs of the residents of North Ridgeville for not only the construction of the project, but also the ongoing maintenance. And this would be a maintenance that would then be on the county. So if a tree falls, you pick up the phone, you call us, we will get it out of the ditch. We'll do annual inspections of the ditch and if the sediment begins to build up, and I say if, but as the sediment builds up, we will then be responsible for going out and maintaining that ditch and removing the sediment once it reaches a certain level. So we ensure that we don't have to have another $1.8 million plus project in the future just to get back to starting where this ditch originally had us at. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer and if not, I'll be around all night.
Well, at the last hearing or meeting that we had, there was some issues in regards to, some of the residents had a bridge that went over their property.
Oh, yes.
Address, has that been addressed?
I believe the, the main concern that there was with that bridge was whether or not we were going to be inspecting it and for its suitability and.
No, it was whether or not you're going to destroy it or.
Oh, we're not, for the, the bridge in question, no, we were not going to touch it. We did take a look at it. It is not an impediment. This would be the one up by where Fortune and Carpenter come together. Excuse me?
No, no.
No? Oh, McDowell, that one we're not touching at all. I, I'm thinking of the one up by the Muddy Acres Horse Farm because they were the ones who were concerned about their.
Yep, that was the one, right? Okay, yep. Two bridges on that property.
So, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't need to do anything at all with those bridges. They're remaining as is. So, we're not removing them. We're not having to do anything with them. They're.
Okay. Well, I just remember because we had those back doors open and this room was packed all the way to the back and that's where I sat. So I was wondering.
Okay, yeah, I know. And I, I remember when we looked at those bridges and.
Okay, I just saw the gentleman here. He might want to speak eventually, but I just wanted to address it.
Similarly, there was a bridge with McDowell and that's another one that we are leaving alone. It is a sturdy thing and we do not want to mess with it.
There are a few pipes in the ditch that are failing that we were planning to remove those two pipes.
Okay.
But that's the only.
And those are the golf course where we're upstream? Okay, because there are the two on the golf course that we're also removing and replacing with one.
Right, I take that back. Yeah, we are taking. And then replacing it with a nicer culvert.
And that's been in consultation with the owner of the golf course, Dale Sandovic.
If there's any damage to that bridge while you guys are doing this work, who's responsible for that? Would that fall on the county?
That would fall on the county and we would be looking at our contractors.
Just wanted to get it out there in the open.
Yep.
Yep.
Don, just for a little perspective, you mentioned that it's become unruly. Does your memory allow you to know how long it's been since we actually took care of this and it, and it worked properly? How did we get to here?
It has, to my memory, never been done by the county. Definitely not in the time I've been with the county, which goes back to 2010. And I believe, I always joke about Peter's ability to find things in a lot. So it has been a long time since, since the county was involved in 1892. We have not been back. It's been a private property manor. The area has changed tremendously since then and the ability of everybody to actually maintain their portion of the ditch is not what it had been when it was all primarily farm. And this way, we're also removing that, that responsibility, that obligation of the, the private property owners to maintain it to the benefit of their neighbors. And we are taking it on to ensure that no one is being adversely impacted by the lack of maintenance. And so that is, it's a collective good as this showed over 700 acres will be benefited. And that land is great for agricultural. It also has great potential future development. And that land is great for agricultural, it also has great potential future development for residential, commercial, industrial development as the local land use would allow. And also, we have a lot of homes that are being damaged within this watershed from flooding. And even if they took care of their ditch and their portion of it, if that entire length is not taken care of, it is to no good. Basically, they would create a, a little detention basin that would stay full of stagnant water and probably create a larger health risk. So this is an opportunity for us to act on the collective behalf of everyone to improve the health, safety and welfare for this region.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, is there any residents here that wish to have comments put into the public record for this meeting today? If you would, if you can just come up to the microphone, and I'm gonna ask Teresa, what would you be appropriate? Would you want them to state their name and address?
They have to on this record.
They have to? Okay. So, good morning, or good afternoon?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
Hi, thank you. Georgia AWIG nine-one-two-five, Quail Court, North Ridgeville. I want to thank the county commissioners for budgeting the class necessary to improve the Fortune and Dixon ditches that will hopefully solve the water drainage issues along R- Road in North Ridgeville. Because of the problems, water has continued to collect in our swale between our street, Quail Court and R- Road. Once the ditches are improved, it will be necessary for our swale to be cleaned as there is much sediment left behind due to a restrictor being placed on the pipeline which goes underneath R- Road. The restrictor has kept the water from completely draining from the swale. Therefore, water has continued to stay in the swale, making it a breeding ground for mosquitoes. The Lorraine County Health Department has agreed to inspect this area the end of May when the temperatures are consistently warmer. They will treat the area for mosquitoes if necessary. Many of our Quail Court residents are older and may have increased susceptibility to vector-borne or zoonotic diseases caused by mosquito bites. As a registered nurse, I appreciate Lorraine County Administration and Health Department for being proactive in helping to maintain a healthy environment for all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, yep. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Hi. My name's Dale Sandovic, I'm the person who owns Creekwood Golf Course, and they've been out and looking at it. And I'd like to speak because I've been talking to the, the county for thirty-five years about this ditch. It's been a problem before then even. And I, I can tell you right now that my property has water backed up on it today, and it hasn't rained in, what, a week or week and a half? And if I go up to Reed Road and I look at the culvert, there's no water going through that culvert. So the water's backed up across my property and everybody east of me, and all the wooded areas east of me are full of stagnant water breeding mosquitoes right now. It's a health hazard. And I know people that live on Sprague Road and that it's backed up in their back property, and it doesn't go away. And I'm worried that our property's gonna lose value and some could regress back to wetlands. And once your property's a wetland, you can't use it, you can't sell it, it's just, it's a big problem. So I would, I'm really in favor of these, this being done, and I would like to help any way I could.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
You just have.
Now, there's quite a few people that stood up that would like to speak, is there?
What?
After you told me you didn't have to pay.
Oh.
Hello, I'm Joseph Bardock.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Smith, thank you all, Chairman, Commissioners, and the staff here. I did file on behalf of Mr. Bardock a, no, exceptions on April fourth. And in terms of eliciting testimony from him, I, I am asking him to go forward and set forth and elicit him, elaborate upon the exceptions that we have provided him for convenience of the board.
Did you have a copy of this letter in front of you so I could go one, one at a time? Okay.
Do we have the ability to put this on the screen?
Might, you just put them on the spot back there.
Victor just said no.
You need a copy. I think he just passed out.
No.
Can we put that up? No?
The commissioners do have all copies.
Yeah, we all have copies, so we're fine, yeah.
We're working on this process, trying to see if everybody can read it at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Sure.
First one, property does not benefit the reference property, it only burdens the property. Now, I can't seem to get exactly the exact information about what kind of permanent easement that you want. You want ten feet on one side of the creek, twenty-five on the other. It seems like it's gonna be more of a permanent easement than a temporary easement. Now, based on testimony here, I'm all, first of all, I'm all for this ditch getting cleaned out, but there, a permanent easement is not necessary, it just needs to be cleaned out. Now, effectively, by putting this easement on both sides of my creek, you're cutting off and making my thirty-five to forty percent of my property useless by doing this. The property, the creek runs all the way through my property, a little bit closer to the south side of the property. So effectively, you're making thirty-five to forty percent of it useless.
And that would be basically that there's no benefit to the property and that's causing a burden on the property.
Yes.
Go ahead, item two.
Would you like to, would that be, wait a minute?
However you guys want it.
Well, no, I'm gonna ask, usually in the past, would you guys like to address each one? Would that be appropriate? Because they've all, what would be more appropriate?
Whatever the board is...
Yeah, whatever the board would.
Board, what would be?
The board could...
Would you like to address each issue as they have seven issues? I want to hear all seven and then we can have them address?
Your mic's not working, Don, that's what Victor said.
Oh, there we go. Okay, why don't we do that? Would that be okay, Counselor?
That would be, that would be... So they'll, they'll address all seven and then rebuttal will be provided, okay.
Okay, that'll be work. And then he might want to rebuttal the rebuttal.
Okay.
We got a lot of lawyers here, so...
I don't see that many.
Okay. The second one, cost related to the maintenance does not apply as maintenance will not be needed on a yearly basis. I kind of touched on that earlier.
Yeah.
Once this is done, you won't need to do it again. My father's owned this property since the early sixties, it's never been done. It's gotten bad the last five to ten years. On a regular basis, on my property, the water goes, flows back into the banks within forty-eight to seventy-two hours. Number three, project is taking away from farmland from the assessed causing it to be substantially damaged. Engineer's estimate of zero for damages is incorrect. I stated that earlier. You're cutting off thirty-five to forty percent of my property for farm use by putting these easements in. Line, number four, the line item for clearing and grubbing should be reassessed as it appears plans call for too much tree removal. And that also, it also affects line items three, fourteen and fifteen. Basically, I want to, I want, I want to know exactly how many trees, what their intent is for tree removal, and I want to say on what happens to the trees that are removed.
And the, the line items that you're referring to are, I don't know if they can put that up on the screen or not?
Line three is temporary wetland matting at the total of $460,000. Line fourteen, erosion control mat at a cost of $107,000. And line fifteen, another erosion control at the cost of $25,000. Okay, now, let's just, there's two number fours here, let's just call it four A. Any easement shown need not be permanent or way too wide, my client is expecting to be... Okay. So I am expecting to be compensated for you disabling thirty-five to forty percent of my property with these permanent easements you want. Number five, there appears to be confusion as where my property ends. The final engineering report, page thirty-six of sixty-four, shows the two culvert pipes on golf course and it's labeled under my parcel number. Number six, the alleged intention of current commissioners is not binding by any stretch of the imagination.
With regard to that, that has to do with the ability for them to make sure that the properties, that these assessments are paid for through funds and also the assessments or the, the ongoing maintenance.
Correct. And, you know, I, I realize you've referred back about, you know, your good track record and not going back and assessing maintenance fees and so on and so forth, but I have a little bit more concern, I think, than other people based on the fact that I was assessed And I'm also told not to worry about it because you have no intentions of ever assessing me that fee, but you did go through a lot of trouble to put these figures together. And since you won't put in writing that it will never in the future be assessed these fees, it's my concern.
Justifiable, too.
And then, number seven, within the ditch improvement, there is no mention of properties in, uh, property being taken out of the flood zone. My property sits in a flood zone, it always has, and it probably never should have. So now, with these improvements, nobody's talking about taking it out of the flood zone. I talked to Mark briefly when he came out to my house once, and he told me that they have no intentions of doing this. This is also something that devalues my property. And I don't see why everybody's property shouldn't be taken out of the flood zone once this project is done.
Does anyone have any questions for?
The new guy does.
Go ahead.
First of all, you have a current ditch, correct?
Pardon me?
You, you currently have a ditch, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the ditch.
Okay, this is the ditch. About how many feet is that? How many feet of that ditch is on your property?
It stretches from the, the culvert pipes, basically, i- it stretches from the border of the golf course all the way to Reed Road, and I would estimate that to be around eight-hundred feet.
We're looking at, what, three miles?
Eight, nine-hundred feet.
Okay. But the current ditch doesn't render your property useless, but the clean ditch will render it useless.
Only, only because of the easements you want to put on it. Now, there's the, the ditch, if you can imagine the bottom third being cut off by this ditch, okay? Now, if you want to put easements on it, nobody will be able to do anything with that property from the north so far up to the easement and then on the back part of it, all the way to the property, all the way to the southern property borders.
Can't farm on easement? The easement prohibits?
I can't get any, I can't get specifications on this easement. Is it gonna be just, are you gonna plant grass over it and I could keep farming right up to the creek like it's always been?
Yeah, I'm getting nods, but you can't, that doesn't go in, nods do not go in the public record, guys, okay?
We'll address it, we'll address it at the end.
Okay, at the end, okay.
I'm just trying to raise the questions to get answered.
Sure.
Okay. And then, so, you know, and the fact that the ditch is gonna be cleaned, you said it, you know, that the water does go back into the ditch after it overflowed.
Within forty-eight to seventy-two hours. Maybe twice in, you know, thirty years it hasn't.
Okay, so, but in any event, the, the whole purpose of this is to alleviate the over, the overflowing in the fir- first place.
Yes, and I have no problem with them doing this project.
You currently farm on both sides of the ditch?
It's leased out to a farmer who does farm on both sides of the ditch, and always has been.
And he gets across the ditch okay?
Yeah, there is a, there is a, a road access to both sides.
Okay, cool. And then, and then you mentioned the tree removal. I, I'm trying to understand what you're...
I just want to make sure, I, you know, I was kind of, I didn't get really any clarification on whether all the trees are gonna be taken out and then, or, or just some. And one, you know, with the trees that are taken out, what's gonna happen to them?
What would you want to happen?
I would, anything bigger than six inches wide, I'd like to keep. If you want to cut them down, let them sit there, I'll take care of them.
You want the firewood or you want to replant it?
No, I want the wood. Yeah, I don't think I'd be able to replant. That'd be, that'd be a tough one. If I could pull that off...
Thank you for indulging me.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Just, I want, I want the firewood and clarification on the trees that are gonna be taken out.
You, you seem to be a very lucid fellow and you put a lot of thought into this. And if your lawyer doesn't screw it up, I now have, I now have a grasp of what's going on.
Okay.
I only say that I know.
Because we know Jeff, yeah. Sorry, Jeff, he's getting, you're making him blush.
Either that or this cold. I'm not COVID, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you for...
But in regards to your one question, which I commented on, justifiable, which is by the ORC, we have to send letters out telling people we have to assess, and it's this board's decision on whether or not to assess or not. Now, when we talk about the future, let's say fifty years from now, it's another $1 million. No, we can't commit a future board, but what this assessment we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, is what we're talking about today is the 1.1 million, and that's what we vote on whether or not to assess you or not assess you. And when he says the history, it's, I would say it's the six, what do you, up to 12 million that we have set aside for these projects? The six and a half in ARPA funds?
We have six and a half in ARPA and another almost million dollars in stormwater funds, plus we have local match from other communities for these projects as well.
Right, so...
So, yeah, so 12 million.
Yeah, so I understand, because the way that's wrote, you're gonna, that's why the first meetings usually have ten times the amount of people.
Exactly. And I, you're doing it for legal purposes to cover yourself.
Well...
On my end, I would like to have something in writing, too, for at least the next twenty years. I'm not gonna be around in fifty years.
Well, you'll have something in writing after we vote.
Right. By the way, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got an attorney.
If I may. Sure.
The, the board is required under the law to provide the schedule of assessments, so that's why you see that figure per your property.
Yes, I understand that. But by having to do that makes me nervous that, because once again, you can't guarantee that somewhere in the future, those fees won't be reassessed.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Well, the, there, there's two parts to that.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
That schedule of assessments that you're pertaining to, the 108,000, I believe you said, correct?
136,000.
Sorry, sorry. That is for construction purposes, so it is the board's intention to use ARPA funds for construction. But the board is still required under the revised code under Ohio law to provide you that construction assessment estimate.
Okay.
So to your point about the board not being able to bind twenty years down the road, correct, but that money is already going to be spent for construction purposes.
Well, one of the concerns is the ongoing need to re-clean and maintain the ditch, and there was an assessment issued in regard to that, which part of the letter said that the commissioners would be paying that going forward. Then we heard today that the city of North Ridgeville would be the ones that will be paying that going forward. So there's no guarantee that future councils of North Ridgeville or future commissioners will be able, you're not gonna be able to bind them, and that's one of the concerns my client has.
After construction, then the maintenance fund comes into play.
Right.
And the maintenance fund is currently...
At a million now, is it? Don's our resident expert.
Currently, we are...
Okay, I just made sure to see where we need...
Yeah, no.
There you go. Thanks, Victor.
Currently, the balance is at $250,000 that we have set aside annually. We increase that by three percent plus an additional dollar amount as we add miles of ditch to what's under maintenance. Just for the board's information, overall, the fees that we collect that actually provides us with the dollars to do maintenance and new projects and permit compliance, this last year, we had a three percent increase in the fee, but we saw basically a 10% increase in our first half collection in 2023 over 2022, in part because of a lot of the growth we're seeing throughout our district. City of Ober, city of Oberlin also is seeing growth in their fee, and we've just brought in a couple of other new members that continue to allow us to, to grow the overall resource base and drive our unit costs down.
Well, a lot of reason that there's not a lot of growth in certain parts of the creeks is because of the trees that are there. So when you open them up to sunlight, you're gonna get a lot more growth in there. So, keep that in mind.
Okay. Anything else?
I, Mr. Moore, I want to thank you. You're at the, uh, two other hearings, and you were the one that pushed for this 4:30 hearing. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep. We want people working and paying taxes. Okay, gentlemen, would you like to, um, answer some of these concerns?
I'll do my best not to break eardrums with the squeal. So on the first comment about whether or not there was a benefit to the property, improving the drainage, we did hear from a property owner directly upstream, Mr. Sandovic and the golf course. in the golf course, and he still has water, uh, standing after a week and a half. Uh, if you look at the aerial photos, uh, from last year, you can see standing water and also areas of inundation within the farm field. By improving the drainage, you're, the farmer is gonna see an increased yield from, uh, Mr. Bartek's farm field. That should in the long term, as the farmer begins to recognize a higher yield, yield higher rents. Uh, it'll also re, by reducing the amount of flooding, um, make the property, uh, more enticing, enticing for future development, if Mr. Bartek were so choose. And then lastly, uh, by having better drainage, it will prevent wetlands from getting established along the ditch and reaching further out into the farm field. Uh, it'll also promote better drainage for the tile that may be in his, uh, uh, field, providing for a longer life of that resource, that investment that, that is there. Um, so there are some direct benefits to him. The other one is, he is no longer financially responsible than for maintaining that whole stretch of ditch that cuts through his property, uh, if it's causing a burden onto neighbors upstream. Right now, it would be a civil matter. This would put, bring it into the public realm and put that responsibility on us. Why we're taking that responsibility is because we see a greater benefit to the community, um, by taking that on.
But how do you stop the government from coming over and laying the gravel road on both sides of, of the ten feet and twenty-five feet, and he can no longer farm? How do you prevent that as we move forward?
Well, one is the initial.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do understand that. One of them is, it is cost prohibitive to bring in that much gravel. We're not gravelling any of this easement along. We are doing the minimum we can. Uh, we're working with landowners in different places where it makes sense to be able to narrow the easement a little bit, where we can still maintain the ditch, uh, bring the equipment back, uh, and save some trees. So we, quite honestly, it is just, it would be from a cost perspective. We couldn't gravel over three miles by twenty-five foot on one side.
But you understand the concept of my question, right?
I do, and it is a limited easement. The, that easement is solely for being able to inspect the ditch and to be able to, uh, do maintenance as needed. Now, we anticipate that maintenance being an annual mowing. And when I say mowing, I should say brush hog. It's to stop wood, uh, woody shrubs and trees from getting established.
But if he's got crops growing right up to the creek, how are you gonna get a brush hog?
Well, there are two things. One, there's no prohibition against it. Two, it's a bad practice, and.
What is?
Planting your crops all the way up against the ditch. It's recommended that you stay a minimum of twenty-five foot, if not fifty foot, from water resources. Uh, and that's to prevent fertilizer and pesticides from going directly into the water from overspray, as well as providing a buffer strip that will help maintain the existing soil that's used to support the crops from being washed into the ditch and then leaving the farm field, which is then losing the one resource the farmer has, and that's his soil.
And what about the concept of him, these are his trees, and how can you work out a, a deal with the people that you hire, so that he can get?
We can work with the contractor and individual property owners to be able to, uh, basically take their trees. There's also no prohibition. If he would like to, he could go ahead and hire someone to clear cut, or within the easement, we would be happy to stake that easement for him. And if he would like to harvest it all himself, we would welcome it. Uh, one, it takes a level of complexity out for us. Uh, two, it will make the project a little bit easier on the contractor. And three, then he is able to dictate where that, uh, goes much easier. We, we would work with him. Don't get me wrong, we would work with him and find a place to, to have the wood go, and we would have an agreement that, once we put it where we do, the contractor and the county are off the hook, and it is his wood wherever we leave it, but it will be outside of the floodplain, which is probably larger than the area of our easement. But it, it would have to be removed from the project area and placed outside of the floodplain. But we have no problem. We do that also with the spoils. We encourage the, our contractor to contact the local farmers to reduce the cost of haul, the haul away, but we do not side cast the spoils. We do not leave them adjacent. We make sure they leave. Now, if the farmer is able to cut a deal, or a landowner's able to cut a deal with our contractor, and we encourage it because it drives our costs down, but it, it has to be away and out so that it's not, we don't have five years later someone come back and say, well, the county left this pile here, and I don't want it, I don't need it, and you gotta make it go away. But we will work with Mr. Bartek if he would like it, or I would encourage him if he is so inclined, we can mark out the easement, the twenty-five foot that would be on the northern side of the ditch, uh, so he would know, and he can bring in his own, uh, contractor and benefit from the trees that have monetary value and/or, uh, uh, the others that he may want to turn into mulch or, uh, kindling or firewood.
The twenty-five is gonna be on the one side?
Well, here, wait, 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 please. Jeff, did you have a question or?
I, I had a question for Mr. Bartek. You mentioned the hundred and thirty-six thousand, and the eight hundred feet is, so, okay, how many acres does this, is your parcel?
Fifty-eight and change.
Fifty-eight?
Yes.
I'm surprised by the hundred and thirty-six thousand. But, Peter, do we have anything to do with the, with the, uh, the whole designation of wetlands? Isn't that a Corps of Engineers kind of thing?
It is, and there's been an investigation of that, and, uh, Mark will tell you that the strategy is to avoid wetlands, not to fill wetlands, and to work around them if, or through them if necessary with those expensive timber mats. That's a EPA requirement.
Okay, okay, sir.
He was not sworn in. He came later.
I know, he'll just raise his right hand. Go ahead, raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give is the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just name it, Andrews.
Uh, Scott Ackland, nine eight six five, Avon Belden Road, Grafton, Ohio. Uh, so my question was that the, the north side is gonna be the twenty-five feet all the way down the project?
It varies depending on, um, the location. Part of that is to help avoid some existing wetlands. We try to avoid those as much as possible to keep the costs down. So we are on the south side on some sections of the ditch, and on the north side on other sections.
What, what is the scope of the maintenance? Is that gonna be herbicides, chainsaws, weed eaters, other than just brush? I mean, there's a lot of places, I'm sure you're not gonna be able to get brush hogs with giant stumps that you've cut, right? Or are you taking the stumps out?
We're, well, the most, outside of wetland areas, we'd be removing the stumps. Within wetland areas, we're gonna be cutting as close to the ground as possible. Um, and then we'll be, again, we're just, primarily it's control of keeping the, the shrubs down. Uh, so, but our maintenance really consists of, first, an inspection, so determine what is needed. Second would be an annual mowing or clearing of maintaining that easement area so that we can easily access, uh, intermittently, and that could be, you know, honestly, it could be once a year, very unlikely. Uh, maybe it's once every five, seven, ten years. Would be probably dipping to restore the original flow line as sediment builds up. Uh, and that, that really is the extent where, so it's gonna be in.
The, excuse me, the easement measurements, will that be taken before or after you dredge and widen the creek?
Uh, those are already accounted for in the plan, but it would be twenty-five foot from the top of the new bank.
Or the new plain.
Now, I don't know, Mark, if you can. So to make it easy, it's about thirty-five feet from the center line.
Out on both sides?
And then fifteen feet on the side that we're not planning to access.
Okay.
And you have a lot of trees.
Oh, I have se, I have, well, I don't know, it's, uh, my maintenance assessment is sixty-five thousand dollars, not nearly as much as that, gentlemen, and my maintenance cost is almost four thousand a year. So I have the same concerns that he does. I did not have the opportunity to hire an attorney. I just got my certified letter about a week before this, uh, hearing, I believe. So maybe it should go out a little sooner in the future. Just guessing, but, or it was the second attempt, maybe, that, that finally got it.
Might have been the second attempt, because it was wrong.
We're not always at the house. We're, we're on the host farm.
Baldwin, right?
Huh?
What was your last name again?
Ackland.
It's Ackland, and Burtler is my mom's name. Anyways, it didn't seem like enough time to, to file, uh, a claim if I was going to anyways. Um, I'm not, obviously, but, um, so my other concern would be the timber. I have over six hundred trees y'all are planning on removing, and that's, that's over a twelve inch caliber. That's none of the small trees or, so that's a lot of wood, and it's a pretty big swath on my property. So, I'm all for the ditch getting cleaned, but I'm not really all for the clear cutting the timber. So, I, I always thought it was best practice to leave the plant material along the streams to keep it from eroding, but.
We, oh, Mike, if you wanna, I had, we're struggling with two different things at once here, and that one is, how do you get to the ditch to remove the sediment that's accumulated without clearing the trees so you can get the equipment?
I'm just kidding.
But we appreciate it.
People to work, yeah. But no, it sounds like, um, with the price of wood nowadays, you're sitting on, you don't want to make a mistake and clear cut that for scrap, especially if they're that big, so, you know. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Uh, my name's Tom Horvath. I live at nine five six zero Root Road. I live in the intersection of Root and Sprague. Um, anybody who knows anything about it knows that that is a wet area. It's always been. I've been living there for thirty years. Uh, I spent the first ten years of my life trying to get this done. Um, after nobody cared about it, uh, I just let it go. Uh, I'm glad it's being done, but I have some concerns. Uh, my house is within that thirty-five foot radius that you're talking about, between the center of the, uh, ditch in my house. So I, 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 I mean, I have to have property to be able to get around my home. Um, I, I'm a little worried about, uh, if Cog County has been involved in this. Cog County drops all their water into our, into that area, and, uh, as soon as they find out this ditch is clean, they're gonna clean the hell out of it. And has anybody done any calculations on the amount of water that's flowing through there? How much is going to flow through there once this is done? And if it will still flood after the ditch is clean? Because the ditch is just a holding area. Uh, there's a lot of water coming through there, and, uh, where does it go once you've got to the eighty-three area? What happens after that? Is it clean? Is it gonna drop there? Um, those are the concerns that I have, uh, other than, um, you know, you know, the maintenance of it. Um, uh, I know it's gonna cost us eventually. Um, everything does. Uh, the water, I just got sewers. Uh, oh, it's not gonna cost anything. They've gone up three times. Uh, everything's gone up. So we can just consider that we're gonna end up paying for that in some sort of, some way. But I'd like to just know if, uh, anything's been done, uh, in the way of Cog County, um, the water flow, the amount of water. Um, do we know if it's gonna flood after this? And if it does, are we just out of luck, or do we come out and clean it deeper? Or, you know, how deep do we clean it?
We'll talk to the guys we spent money on with the studies, and, so, do you guys want to answer those concerns?
Well, I, I'll start off with a, a couple of the simple ones, and we'll move it to the engineers.
I have is that the thirty-five feet easement's now on its.
Did you want me to address that?
Okay.
I didn't build the house, but I've lived there for a long time, so.
So I, I'm happy to address this at the board's, so, the, the, there's two, there's two permanent easements. The first easement is a temporary easement for purposes of constructing the ditch. Um, and then there's another easement that comes after the ditch is created, and that's called a permanent easement. Um, the easement is just a permission to enter the land. It's not taking away any land, meaning you still fully own, th- these individuals will fully still own their land.
But you're gonna widen the ditch so much that there's not gonna be much left. See, I, I, I want to be able to get around the side of my home. That's all I'm concerned about. I mean, you can't put the ditch within ten feet of my house. It's twenty feet now.
Yeah, I, I believe they could address it, but I just wanted to, just for the board's purposes, just clarify the easement. It, it's not a taking of the property in any fashion. It's just that temporary easement to come onto the land to construct the ditch, and then a permanent easement to maintain and clean the ditch thereafter. Um, but as far as the, the dimensions or the logistics of that ditch, I, I believe, you know, down our market could speak to that.
Your house is outside of the easement before, during, and after construction.
Really?
Yes. Your, your house is on the, the skinny side of the easement.
Yeah, right.
And so the, the larger easement at the top of bank where we would be maintaining the ditch from is on the opposite side.
That's, uh, that's one thing I want to know.
Um, now, the, the other thing is, we have had conversations with Olmstead Falls, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, and we have not been able to get them to cooperate. If we wanted to go another twenty years, we might get them to go, but there came a point in time where we had to make a decision on whether or not this project was important enough for us to make the investment to protect our residents and do the right thing by them, or continue to wait and hope that we could have another governmental entity that, quite honestly, exists differently than revised code statute for ditches actually contemplates, where they consider a board of commissioners and all of these type of things, and Cog County went to a charter form of government, which is a whole level of complexity that would have been added on, and I'd feel sorry for Greg if he had to learn, we lured that one on him. So, no, we did not. Now, that being said, and I'm gonna push it over to the engineers, but we have looked at the flows. We're restoring the ditch to original, so it should be able to handle a lot of water. But we flooded in the past, and we're gonna flood in the future. What we're gonna see is a reduced incidence, the number of times that we would get flooding, and the severity. So what would be a normal, you know, rain that would create a flood today, probably won't create it tomorrow. But when we get more rain, we get a five hun, you know, the hundred year, the five hundred year, the superstorm Sandy, I don't have that kind of money, and I don't think I have that kind of permitting ability to dig a ditch that big.
When I moved in there thirty years ago, the ditch was about that deep. I mean, there was no ditch.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, I didn't take, uh, the oath initially because I didn't intend to speak, but some things have been said, so.
You, yeah, please. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth?
I do. My name is Calvin Holliday. I live at nine forty-two Root Road, and I am one of the people that's impacted by the water that comes from the development across the street. I'm glad that they applied for this improvement. Thank you, county, for working on doing this. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-four, and I've watched that ditch slowly degrade. And anybody that drives through Sprague and Root knows that it's just a massive body of water. It just stands there and goes nowhere. Uh, I can't go out in the summertime, bright, bright daylight on a hot day, without putting on all kinds of mosquito repellent because of mosquitoes, and I'm talking the big ones, the little ones everywhere, and this is, have been about the last five to seven years. So I appreciate the people who live in the development putting up with this, and my neighbor and I are the reason the restrictor are on that. I asked the city of North Ridgeville, can I see all the paperwork relative to the cut that was put across Root Road to take the water from that development and put the ditch behind my house? Because once I did that, my house was flooded three times. I'd never been flooded before then. I'm advised by the North Ridgeville City Engineer, we can't find that paperwork. It's been lost. I said, okay, I don't believe you, but that's the way it is. The city was nice enough to come out after we'd been flooded, say, you gotta do something because what you call a ret, a retention basin on the other side of the road is a redirection of water. I don't know how many, how many homes put water into that little hole in the ground that then goes in that pipe and goes into my ditch, and there's nowhere for that water to go once it hits that ditch because it's all plugged up. Uh, this lady, uh, is trying to get that restrictor moved. We asked for restrictor, just modify the pace of water coming in. You can't have. You can't have all that water come in and that, that hole in the ground and hitting that ditch all at once. Because then it comes in, I have a septic system. Because then it hits that ditch, comes back through my septic system and floods my family room three different times. I feel sorry for her. I feel sorry for me. I think it was poor planning on somebody's part that this happened. I'm pretty sure that the water used to flow to the north before they made these changes. Now it flows to the south and it has nowhere to go. Now she takes this restrictor off and, and I can understand with the mosquitoes, there's not just mosquitoes in that. Anybody who's gone and looked at that thing behind, that's a mess. That's a nasty little mess, but that isn't just where the mosquitoes are. They're everywhere. The spring peepers now, because there's so much standing water, those little frogs that peep in the spring. There used to be a few of them. Now it sounds like I live in the Amazon in the springtime. And it, it sounds funny, but then the mosquitoes come out and you get hammered. And, and I appreciate you're gonna clean the ditch, but before there's a place for the water to go after it leaves our ditch, if, if it's coming from the development, hit my ditch and it hasn't been cleaned because that restrictor's been removed, then I'm stuck again. I don't want her to have problems. I don't want me to have problems lately. And you probably have no idea about the restrictor situation. Jeffrey Armbruster was nice enough when he worked for City of Arm, uh, City of North Ridgeville. He came out and he worked out this accommodation. It's just slow the pace of water down. And as far as the city of North Ridgeville is gonna do our portion there in Ridgeville, uh, I assume that that's gonna be at the end because why open that all up for nowhere for the water to go when it hits everything else? So we'll be at the tail end of the process, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we'll have all that mess going on until we get the rest of the ditch done.
Uh, Mr. President, I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, but, um, the residents and, um, Mr. Holiday, I've been out your way and have toured and looked and heard this whole story and I'm aware of the restrictor, so hopefully when we get to the end of it, with the work of city, with the city of North Ridgeville, we can get some resolve, hopefully.
Hopefully. I, I, I don't want them to have problems. I don't want me to have problems, but if they take that restrictor off, I, I had to put a backflow preventer at the end of my pipe. Because, uh, and there were times before the developments across the street where we'd get uh, Noah-like rains and I never had a problem until, I don't know how many homes put water in that little hole in the ground across the street until it hits my ditch, but it's a lot. Because my ditch will be practically full, so, without that restrictor. And then that, so I have to close the end of my pipe, which means the water from my downspouts goes into my septic, then I have to throw a sump pump in to keep getting, from getting flooded by rainwater from my roof. So, I'm just saying this because I don't want anybody to put the horse before the, the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Hmm, thank you. Anything to add?
Uh, one thing I do wanna emphasize in talking about with North Ridgeville is that, uh, the county is gonna bid out the work, including the work in North Ridgeville, and we are gonna be working from the west-east so that as we go, we'll be opening up the ditch to allow the water to flow and not just working against ourselves as far as the directionality of the work.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Uh, Jim Raider, ninety-six twenty Island Road, Eaton Township. Um, I know the engineer has the report, you guys have the report. I don't believe we have access to the report. The, the report, maybe the estimate, drawings, bid scope. Uh, only, only because you're gonna, if you're gonna bid this out, what are the contractors held to? Wha- what are they responsible? How are they gonna clean it up? Just, we'd like to know that too. You guys have it, but I don't think we actually have it in writing. Same with the, uh, the easement. I mean, that's fine. It, it's verbal. But what, what is it in writing? What does that look like? How is it documented? And maybe it's out there. I don't know.
Is it on the stormwater page?
The, uh, constru- the plans are not as of yet. Um, the, the report was, the little PowerPoints.
Yeah, but that's not what he's asking.
Right, but we can make this available.
That's all I'm asking. We'd like to look at it too, see what the document says.
Teresa, I think. Greg?
Is that available on the?
Well, he just asked that, that portion isn't, but if in your letter, there's that little link there.
Okay.
Um, it won't be there tonight.
Okay.
But sometime tomorrow, maybe, we can get it up.
We should figure out, we should be able to get it on. I know Jessica's on vacation, but we'll figure out a way to get it.
And what all is that? I mean, the report we've seen before through the previous hearings, but, you know, what is, what do the drawings look like? Where is the, where is it going? Where is it crossing? Uh, is that gonna be public? Will that eventually be public?
So the re- the final report actually includes drawings.
Okay.
Um, so if they post that online, the drawings are included in that final report.
And the contractor bid spec will be on there too? What, what they're, what you're expecting from them, cleaning up? What are they responsible for for taking out trees?
That is not in the final report, but it, the bid spec, uh, would be public. It would be part of the public bid process, yes, it would be available to anyone.
Would that be eventually posted on the same?
Once we get to that portion.
Okay, that's fine. Just asking, okay. Um, I do appreciate you guys using stormwater funds. It is stormwater. We're all benefiting, so I, I do appreciate that. Uh, we just happen to be in the path, uh, so I do appreciate that. Uh, completely understand the concerns. I completely understand what you guys are trying to accomplish and, and we're willing to cooperate. But we are also trying, we're also trying to be good stewards of our property. And we do have mature trees that are way older than any of us in this room, that, that I wanna be a good steward of the property too. So I know we've walked the property. We've marked some. I under- I concede there's gonna be some trees that have to go. But I would just ask that, that we hold those contractors to be respectful for our property as well. So I'm not sure what teeth is in there. Uh, I'm not sure how we, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that they're held accountable too. Uh, we're all willing to cooperate, but I just wanna make sure that, uh, that the contractors are, are held responsible too.
Hey. Yep.
Don, do we have, do we, when, when plans go out to bid, this will go through the engineer's office?
It'll go through county purchasing.
Okay. Is there a plan room at, at your department or at the engineer's office where people could come and see the plans?
I can make a availability on the fifth floor for the general public to take a look at them. That way, uh, we're always staffed. I've got a room. I've got tables. So, yeah, we could make that possibility or an availability for the general public to look at, but if a contractor wants it, they'll be purchasing then a copy of the plans or the general public could purchase. These are gonna be substantial.
I would think so. But I, you know, but having a, the ability to come and see a set of plans as opposed to shrinking a blueprint-sized drawing down to a computer screen.
Right.
Then try to see it on that. Is there a way that if people here in this room would like to see, see that, I think it'd be easier if you, anybody wanted to see these plans should get with Don and give you, give him your contact information, so once he has that information, he'll call you. Instead of you, you know, instead of Don, you know, right? So if you could put together a list and, um, you can reach out to the residents that would like to see that plan and see if there is gonna be any teeth in that, uh, some of these contracts that you guys are gonna be signing. Especially if they're cutting down trees because you don't know. It's like anything else. See, you know, they see some nice trees, some walnut or oak, they're gonna.
And where are they leaving tops? Where are they doing stuff? What's it gonna look like?
Yeah.
How do I have control? Uh, we, we walked it down, but how do I have control?
Yeah.
How do I tell the contractor, hey, that was supposed to be saved?
Right.
Uh, well, it was in my way. It's gone, sorry.
Yeah.
So that's all.
So one of the requirements that we, uh, will have in the plans that is that prior to any clearing and grubbing, the contractor will be required to walk with us and the property owners who have requested trees to be saved and remark the trees to make sure everyone knows what trees are to be saved based on, uh, what we previously marked with the property owner.
Okay. Those are my concerns. I just wanna address them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raider.
Does anybody else have any follow-up? I figured, I saw your heads bobbing over there, so.
Thank you. Uh, my client just has a few points that he'd like to clarify. Um, real quick, uh, to Mr. Holiday's point about the water coming from the development. Uh, this creek is gonna be extended all the way to the Cuyahoga County border. What's gonna happen to the water issues over there once they start building again? That's my understanding that the building stopped over there because of water issues. This is gonna be a temporary fix really, only if they don't build again. So what's gonna happen with that?
When you say they, when you say they, define they. You're talking about in Cuyahoga or here?
I'm talking about the, the builders. I'm talking about the builders in North Ridgeville that caused a lot of this.
Yeah.
I'm not talk- I know it's been mentioned that Cuyahoga is done dumping a lot of water.
Right, right.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about some of the water issues is from the developer.
Okay.
Like Mr. Holiday just recently referenced, so.
Thank you.
Uh, to me, this petition, we know, has been brought on by the city of North Ridgeville. So to me, it looks like an attempt to get that development back up and building again. And you better take into consideration future water problems. Most definitely. Um, also, uh, when I, when it was questioned about the benefits of this, Mr. Remanchik immediately went to basically saying, well, Dale Sandvik said that it would benefit him. He's referencing the golf course. I don't deny the golf course would benefit from it. They need to get it done. It needs to get done. It would definitely benefit them. I'm talking about the benefits to my property, not to anybody else, but to my personal property. That's what I'm talking about when I say there would be no benefit. I never said it would not benefit anybody else. Um, and also, the easement, I, I need to see a blueprint. It seems like it's really kinda up in the air. Well, it's twenty-five feet and then ten feet and then, well, if it comes down here, we're not gonna do it. To me, it seems like we need to have another hearing. Just for the basic, I want the layout of the, uh, the easement. I mean, this is a big thing. There's people over on Island Road that aren't even here. I don't even think they realize that, you know, I look at their property and they're gonna be, they're gonna be, I mean, they're gonna have their decks removed. I, I don't think people really, um, can understand that easement situation. I really wanna be able to see the easement. What's it gonna be? And you, you referenced something about, Dan, you referenced something about the easement. Can you tell me what the permanent easement's gonna look like? I mean, is it just gonna be, y- you say it's just to access the property in the future. So what's it gonna be until you wanna access it again? Could I still farm it? Can I still farm it? The, the, can the farming practices? Can I, can I, can I still farm it the way it's been farmed?
I was, I, I previously had made a statement referencing the easements just for purposes of, of the Board. I can't answer your direct questions. Well, hang on a second, sir. I would just urge you just to continue to direct your questions towards the Board.
Okay, okay. So there seems to be a lot of uncertainty there and then getting to farming practices. Uh, you, you could drive around and see that most people farm all the way to their waterways, to the creeks. There, nobody's staying fifty feet away. And if you wanna talk about people, businesses in general that are supposed to not use twenty-five to fifty feet of their property with pesticides, so on and so forth, for the, for the sake of environmental purposes. I, I, everybody does it. Everybody does it. It's not monitored. So that doesn't make any sense to me for an argument on that point either. So, that's all I'd like to say.
If I may, Board, I'd like to in- invite Mr. Bartek to, uh, review a set of plans with me so that, uh, he'll be able to see where the easement is located in relation to his farming. Uh, most of it stays outside of his area that is tilled based upon aerial photographs and the, the design plan. Uh, most of it would be contained within the, the wooded setback that he has from the ditch.
I just have one more question.
Just restate your name.
Which, um, uh, Tom Horvath, nine five six zero Root Road. Uh, can you tell me which culvert is being, uh, replaced? Is it the culvert at Sprague or? I mean, I know it's an old culvert. I'm just curious.
Do you, are you talking about culverts within the road rights away?
Yeah, the one underneath, uh, Sprague Road.
There are no culverts underneath the roadways being planned to be replaced.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions? Okay, factors to be considered by the Board at the final hearing. Oh, I have to close it? Okay. Is that fine? Well, that's, we don't know. That's, there's, okay. So.
So moved?
No, no. Um, we have to decide on whether or not to postpone or, um, con- or postpone or, or close the hearing, so. I'll start out with, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Muddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Now I can continue, okay.
Sorry.
Did you?
Yeah, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, if you, yeah, that's fine.
You got them?
Yeah.
You're the one, you prepared it, so.
Yeah, it, the Board, in determining whether or not to, uh, move forward with the improvement and whether the improvement should be granted, the Board shall consider the following factors. The location and cost in construction of the improvement, the compensation for land or other property necessary to be taken, the effect on land along or in the vicinity of the route of the improvement, the effect on land below the lower terminus of the improvement that may be caused by constructing the improvement, the sufficiency or insufficiency of the outlet, the benefits to the public welfare, the benefits to land, public corporations, and the state needing the improvement, and lastly, any other proper matter that will assist the Board. Also, the Board shall set aside the former order and dismiss the petition if the Board finds any of the following. That the cost of the improvement will be equal to or greater than the benefits that will be derived from the improvement if constructed, that the improvement is not necessary, or that the improvement will not be conducive to the public welfare.
Thank you. So what's our next step? Do we vote whether to grant this or dismiss it? That's the motions that we're discussing right now.
Well, the, correct. So the petition is currently before the Board, um, as submitted. Uh, the Board has, uh, the opportunity or within its discretion to privately deliberate. Because this is a hearing. This is not a public meeting, so the deliberations can be done privately. Um, the deliberations will consider, uh, whether to affirm its former order granting the petition or whether to set aside its former order granting the petition and dismissing the petition. And again, the Board at its discretion can do so and privately deliberate or, uh, may do so as it sees fit.
The concern I have is that if we move forward, if we, if we do nothing, okay, let's just say, I'm gonna say, if we move forward, okay, does that allow the residents to then start the negotiations in regards to possibly the tree removals, the cost? Or is that, because I'm, I'm afraid that people are gonna, I don't want people losing the ability to negotiate for any loss of land use if that's the case.
So we're not speaking what's covered under the revised code. This is just customarily what's been done at the construction phases. As, and I understand it, what's been done customarily at the construction phases, that those negotiations have been conducted on site with the property owners, correct?
That's been how it's been for at least the last five plus years is ongoing negotiations as we go as we get ready to go out to bid to finalize plans. And we, we've even, on occasion, when it's been brought to our attention, we've made, we've made, uh, amendments to the contract in order to address a need that became apparent during construction.
And those are addressed in the final plan?
I- if they're made aware before we go out to bid, yes, but, like I said, even one time there became a situation that became readily apparent during construction where we actually then al- altered the plan. We actually did a little more work than was originally anticipated in order to create a better project for the county and for a property owner.
As, as I understand it, then the Board has, uh, two options. Uh, the Board does have the ability to continue the hearing to more or less, for lack of a better word, gather more evidence. It seems that maybe in this scenario, the Board would want to, uh, ascertain, for lack of a better word, what those, uh, removals may be. Or the board can leave that as is and let it be done as it's customarily done after the fact with the property owner. The property owner does have the right to appeal any decision here that the board makes. They have a 30-day window to appeal.
In that 30 days, that's, that would be the only leverage a property owner would have against the county.
I can't speak to leverage.
Oh, I'm just, I just don't want it to be like we pass something, then they lose all leverage in order to negotiate for, I'm, I'm just looking at trees only. There could be other issues at hand. You see, you see where I'm kinda? And so, now, we're gonna have to trust that you, that you guys work with the property owners and make sure you make a fair deal. And I don't need the property owners to feel like they're not getting a fair deal because they feel we voted to move forward or not. That's all. So, that's my, that's my concern right there. Whether it's a, whether this board agrees or not, I just feel like it needs to move forward. That's where I'm at. But I don't, I also wanna protect the property owners and the valuation, and it sounds like some easement issues, which I don't think could get resolved unless we move forward. And then it sounds like you only have 30 days to negotiate that.
Well, they have 30 days to appeal any decision.
Well, I'm just saying they're leveraged, so.
Well.
And I know you can't address that, but I'm just.
The board can always continue this hearing to allow additional evidence to be heard on, on the improvement, which it seems like that may cover that. Your concern there, Commissioner Moore?
I'm just, I'm just voicing, I'm, yeah, that's where we're at.
I think we, you know, I'm new to this, but, you know, there's, there's an opportunity for change orders, as Mr. Romancik said, as they encounter things that were not maybe handled in the design or, or arise out of it. And the, the 30-day window would apply to somebody who wants to appeal the decision. I think the only thing, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that if somebody thinks we're taking property, then they, they need to, they need to do that. But I think by here, the greater good, from what I've seen between the testimony and the, and the, and the presentation is that we, we, if we wanna alleviate this in any kind of a reasonable time, we've been doing this since a previous board started the project. The money is available, and we should, we should follow through with the commitment and, and let the, let the legal system take over if there's something that we haven't, haven't foreseen for one or two individual property owners. Let them avail themselves of the system.
Anything?
Yes, well, not really, but just to piggyback on what Commissioner Riddell said. It did, the last board, when Commissioner Moore and I started in 2021, this project was brought to us via Don Romancik. And then we did go over and talk to the city of North Ridgeville just to kinda clarify the, the history. So, we, we're going on two years here, guys, and we, we really do wanna get the process, get the process going, as Commissioner Riddell said. Keep it going.
I don't think that's a motion, but.
It's not a motion, but, yeah.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would.
I make a motion that we, that we.
Right here.
That we, that we do proceed.
So, you're gonna find for the improvement in firming assessments and order the letting of the contracts? Is that what you would like to say?
Yes. Motion, finding for the improvement and confirming assessments and order the letting of the contracts.
I'll second that.
Did you wanna add something else, Greg?
No, I did not.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay. Only, like I said, the concern is, Don, if you could somehow put together a list of those people that should be contacting you, I would appreciate that so that you can reach out to them, show them the plans and keep, and keep everybody educated, and that's all I'm gonna ask.
Mr. President, and Don, too, the resounding, what we're hearing is the trees. So, if you could make sure and, and keep your communication with the contractor for the trees to make sure that, that, that he knows, he or she knows.
Okay.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think we have to remember that while this is serving a public good, for a great, great chunk of the community, 700 and some acres, the individual property owners do have some rights and, and should be given some consideration.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank everybody for their patience, too. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for being patient.
Anything further? Commissioner Riddell.
Aye.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Is there any other business?
Nope. Seen no other business.
Next meeting is April 18th at 5:00 p.m.?
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you all again for coming in. We appreciate it. Thank you.